...of the Twinsburg Board of Education. I apologize, we do not have the audio working for the speakers tonight, but the audio is recording for the TV cable channel. So Mark is back there, they've got some new equipment that they're trying to get installed, so we'll try to speak loudly so you can hear us, but it is being recorded. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Stuber?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Stroh Waldron?
Here.
And Mrs. King Criswell was on her way.
Mrs. King Criswell is stuck in a traffic jam, she will be here shortly. Now I would like to ask you all to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and thank you for coming tonight. I know it's kind of cliche to say this, but wow, where did the summer go? Here we are, the first day of school already. Kick things off this morning and Mrs. Powers has been tweeting, as is the way to do things these days to communicate. So all morning long, as I was sitting at work, I was getting tweets on my phone and I was looking and she was tweeting pictures of the kids getting off the school buses and how the schools looked inside. It was actually pretty awesome and thank you, Mrs. Powers. I know a lot of people enjoy it, but I really enjoy getting those updates from you, so thank you.
It was fun.
So on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome back our staff and students, welcoming them back to school, and we look forward to yet another successful year. But before we move forward, I do want to stop for just a minute and pause and call attention to some of the work that our administrative team has been working on during the last few months of the summer and also during the last year. Last year, we had a district goal that was related to the wellness of our students. And by the end of the year, with the leadership of Mrs. Trapp-Hagen, we've identified a company that we will be speaking more about at a future board meeting for consideration that will provide wellness services to our student population. In addition, we've also given consideration to an employee assistance service that will also receive attention by the board at an upcoming meeting. I think it's important to note in today's environment that we are aware and are providing the means to address the wellness of our students and staff. So we'll hear more about that in some upcoming meetings. Last year, our district made a decision to move to the Cuyahoga County ESC, and with that change and per the guidance from Mrs. McKinney, we will be adjusting the process regarding how we manage the need for subs in the district. And while the internal process for our teachers should remain the same, the external process regarding how the subs are identified and assigned will be managed through a qualified third-party service. And in the world of curriculum and assessments, Mrs. Farthing and her staff have been very, very busy attempting to keep up with the ever-changing direction from the state per legislative mandates and guidelines that are adopted by the ODE. And while we've heard that the park testing will be eliminated, the assessments of student performance will still be accomplished but via less intrusive methods. We will hear more about this from Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Farthing during the coming weeks and months. It was also notably busy during first year, during Mr. Welker's first year with the Twinsburg School District. He is our business director of business services. And in addition to revising the organizational structure and many of the operational processes in the Transportation Department, Chad was very busy throughout the year facilitating the strategic facilities assessment. Many of the items that resulted from that assessment became projects that were already on our list or are becoming projects being added to our list. Some have been completed, some are being planned. And in addition, this year, Mr. Welker will be finalizing a multi-year plan of action that will address some of the larger projects in the district. And these remarks that I give tonight don't even scratch the surface, folks, with respect to the work that's been done and is still underway and is being planned for the future. And we will receive more information from our administrative team at upcoming meetings. On a procedural note tonight, at the conclusion of the business agenda for this meeting, the board will have need for a brief executive session that will take place here in the back room. And then subsequently, when we come out of executive session, we will move from this location and reconvene at the high school in the L-Pod, in the large group instruction room. And there, the board and our administrative team will engage in a work session to review proposed district goals for the 2015-2016 school year. And at the conclusion of that work session over at the high school, the board will consider for approval those district goals. And two final notes of interest. A very, very visible project was completed this summer, which includes in the district replacement of the stadium field turf. It looks great, and I can tell you from firsthand experience that it's a quality surface and will be safer for our student athletes. And I want to note that there will be a Meet the Tigers celebration at the stadium this Friday night at seven o'clock. We will have our marching band, our cheerleaders, and following a ribbon-cutting ceremony, our coaches and fall sports teams will be recognized. Everyone in the community is certainly welcome to come out and help us kick off the new school year with some pomp and circumstance at the stadium. In addition to many of these external projects that were visible, such as parking lots and driveways and sidewalk replacement projects, our district was also privileged to host the Cost of Freedom exhibit. It was an event made possible by the sponsorship of the Twinsburg VFW and with the cooperation of the city and the school district and many of our local businesses. This was a tribute to honor, respect, and remember all of those who have served our country defending our freedoms. And I will use this as a segue to the superintendent's report because I know Mrs. Powers has some special recognitions planned this evening regarding that topic, as well as introduction of our new staff members who are here tonight, and thank you to all of you for being here. So without further delay, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Stuber, Board of Education. Before we get to my remarks, Mr. Stuber, we need to back up the agenda as there is the need for a public hearing regarding the retiree rehire of Maria Raska. So if we can just go back up on the agenda and take care of that business first, that would be great.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Powers.
You're welcome.
I apologize for skipping that. Agenda item E is the notice of a public hearing. A public hearing on the issue of the employment of Maria Raska by the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District. Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Maria Raska's reemployment with the board in the position of teacher as a retiree. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after a total of thirty minutes. If we need a sign-up sheet, we can do that, if necessary, to determine the order that persons will speak. At this time, I would like to pause and ask if there is anyone who wishes to step up to the microphone and address the board regarding the rehiring of a retired teacher in the district. This is just notice of a public hearing that we did a few months ago. This is the time when we do that and we will take action, consider action for that later in the meeting. Seeing none, we will now move forward. Thank you, Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. Well, good evening, Board of Education. It has been a fantastic day here in the Twinsburg City School District. As you know from my tweets, Mr. Welker and I were at the bus garage at 5:00 a.m. with bagels and cream cheese for our fantastic transportation staff, and we were on the road ever since then. And it has just been a fantastic day. Everything looked great, the buildings and grounds were all shipshape, and our kids came, they were so excited, they looked so wonderful. Our staff was greeting them at the door and just a super way to begin the 2015-16 school year. So we're very, very delighted that the year is off to such a great start. As you mentioned, Board of Education, this evening, we're going to recognize our new staff members, and it has been a very busy summer of hiring. Mrs. McKinney has done a great job. You know, we only get the very best talent because we want the very best staff members and teachers in front of our kids every day. And so in a moment, we're going to introduce the newest members of our staff. But before we do that, I have a couple of other things. First, on my list of announcements, first of all, Board of Education, it was a tremendous day, not only because of the beginning of the school year today, but we also got word today from our friends at WVIZ Idea Stream and the GARR Foundation that we are the recipients of a $45,000 professional development grant. This is the second year that the GARR Foundation has approved our grants application. We are very, very delighted, and this grant will impact our teaching staffs at Dodge and RBC, much like last year. So congratulations to Dodge and RBC, to Mrs. Farthing, and to the folks at WVIZ Idea Stream, and of course, the funders, the GARR Foundation out of Akron. We are just delighted and grateful for the opportunity to bring this fantastic professional development, all about problem-based learning. So it's an initiative we started last year, we're picking that up and moving it forward. So congratulations all the way around. Also, more congratulations to the city of Twinsburg. A couple of days ago, tweeted out and put it on the website, that Money Magazine has selected the city of Twinsburg as number twenty-two on the magazine's top fifty best small cities to live. And the nice thing about the article is there's a whole paragraph about the impact the school district has on the city and why living here is such a great thing because of our high-performing kids. So congratulations to Mayor Prokop and City Council and everyone who works for the city of Twinsburg and all of the residents who live in the state of Twinsburg. This is a tremendous kudos to everyone and just delightful that we're a part of that event. So thank you very much. As Mr. Stuber indicated, this Friday is a very, very big event at Tiger Stadium, and the flyers were just printed today. Thank you, Ms. Cosso, for getting them out to us. On this Friday, it's Meet the Tigers, the inaugural event at Tiger Stadium. The event starts at 7:00 p.m., so everyone is invited to come out and celebrate our new Tiger turf project, as well as the fact that we're asking everyone to wear the blue and white. So please, wear your blue and white spirit wear, come out, hear the band play their first performance, be a part of greeting all of our fall athletes and the coaches, and also, we're going to have some entertainment in between the introductions. Don't know exactly what that's going to be, Mr. Fantone is planning a great night, and so we look forward for everyone to come out and just have a great, grand celebration this Friday evening. Okay, so Board of Education, as you know, on the Independence Holiday Weekend, we were so grateful to be able to host the Cost of Freedom. The gentlemen and ladies here today from VFW Post 4929 had a vision more than three years ago and asked us to be partners in that initiative, and we were so honored to host the Cost of Freedom exhibit here on the grounds at Twinsburg High School. This evening, Commander Joe Jasny and our friends from the VFW Post 4929 have asked for some time on our agenda to address the board, so we welcome you. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
It works for recording.
First of all, I want to thank the school board for allowing us a little bit of time, forty-five minutes, we'll get out of here. But anyway, I would like Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker, please step down here first. They would be so kind. We rode you hard that weekend, July 1st, you know, but you never stopped giving as we asked. Mrs. Powers, we'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation from Twinsburg Post VFW 4929, a remembrance of everything you've done for us for that weekend, and we hope that you'll display it proudly. Mr. Welker, I'd like you to accept on behalf of the school board and city of Twinsburg, a certificate, again, thanking the school board and the city for their support. But we're really here for July 5th, 2015, zero eight hundred hours. A flag was raised at Twinsburg High School over the Cost of Freedom. It flew proudly until fifteen hundred hours Sunday afternoon, 3:00 p.m., when it was lowered, retired, in a place of honor. That flag now is enshrined in a case that we will now present to the school board to display with the insignias of the five military branches, school, police, fire, and one lone crusader, who reminds us the Cost of Freedom is not free. Oh, yes. Oh, come on, Kevin, oh, come on. Once again, we cannot thank enough the school board and all their staff who helped make a tremendous weekend possible for us veterans. And for any new staff, just go on YouTube, type in Twinsburg Cost of Freedom, and be ready to be awed. I have one other request, though. We left two cases on this table. I would like for every teacher in this school district, every teacher, all grade levels, to have one of these for their classroom, to remember what that weekend was about, especially the art exhibit from the schools. And you have to go on YouTube if you haven't seen snapshots of it. The schools did a phenomenal job of the art. In addition, we have candles here for everyone that wishes one this evening. That burned at that wall brightly for four days. They're yours. Put them in a place of honor. If you have more, if there's not enough to cover the crowd. That is our request, that is our thank you. For my members of VFW Post 4929, and this is just a small portion of them, we're small but a mighty port of posts, I have Al and Steve and Smitty and Dave and Larry and Bill and Marcy and Buzz, you go with that nifty all the time, Mike, Dale, and Ben. We all thank you for making our weekend special by giving us that piece of property across the street. Cannot thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Gentlemen, I can't say enough thanks to you for, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, we have to. She is a veteran.
Yes, she is a veteran. How's that? I just want to say thank you on behalf of the school district and as elected representatives, just residents and community members, to all of you for your service. It means so much to us to have you here with us this evening. That event was awesome, and it was made possible by all of your efforts. So thank you for not only the event, but your service to our country and to defend our freedoms. Thank you very much from all of the people of Twinsburg. Thank you.
One, two. Lead them out, Ben.
For the people in the audience, I'm going to put these out back so that when you need, you can pick them up and you don't have to.
You know, I've said more than once that you had to be at Twinsburg High School Independence Day Holiday Weekend to really understand what the Cost of Freedom exhibit meant, not only to the veterans but to our city. It was a tremendous, tremendous community event, and the gentlemen and ladies that were just here really inspired so many of us. And my dad was a Korean War vet, and you know, I never knew until, they asked me to do a presentation on Sunday afternoon, and so I had to do some research about my dad's base in Korea and how he was in the military and the years that he served. And Dad was a quiet man, and it wasn't until I needed to do the research to do my speech that I really understood what that was about. So it truly impacted me personally, I know it impacted so many folks, and our wonderful art exhibit at the Commons over that weekend, I'm indebted to our art teachers, did a fabulous job, and the kids' artwork is just wonderful. So, you know, we just mentioned that Twinsburg is number twenty-two on the best small cities in the United States. That's one reason why. Truly was a remarkable event, and I will never forget it, that's for sure. So, enough about me, right? Tonight, we have reason to celebrate. We have a wonderful, wonderful new staff, and Ms. McKinney is here this evening, and she's going to help introduce all of our wonderful staff members. And if you are a new staff member and you're going to be introduced, we're going to ask that you please come forward and stay up here because we're on TV and members of our community really want to know who you are, a little bit about you as well. And I know that our administrative team is here as well, so administrators, if you would please join us up front and shake hands with the members of your staff when they're called. And Board of Education, if you wanted to greet folks with a shake of a hand too, that would be wonderful. So let's get situated here.
As I mentioned, Mrs. McKinney and our administrative team has been so very, very busy this past several months, starting way back, I want to say, in January with the hire of our varsity head football coach. I remember just being at the board office till 1:00 a.m. in the morning doing interviews, the stuff that the legends are made of, I suppose. So we're, we'll be big things for football, Coach Bell, no pressure on you. And we'll get to introduce Coach Bell in a moment, but before we do that, we would like to begin with new members of our staff at our central office.
Mary Ann Franco is coming to us from North Walton School, from the position of administrative assistant to the Director of People's Services, and she was also principal secretary at Royal View Elementary in North Walton. Welcome, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann will be joining central office as my new administrative assistant. Our next new employee at the central office is Amy Vargo, and Amy is our new payroll administrator. She'll be replacing Nancy Wagner, who retired at the end of the year. Amy most recently worked at Neonet for the past two years as the payroll specialist for the Green and Barberton School District. Before that, she was the payroll coordinator for Barberton Schools for 21 years. Although she's not here this evening, let's welcome her with a round of applause.
Wilcox Primary School, Andrea Setwell, the volunteer in the classroom of both Wilcox and Bissell, and more recently coordinating Hoffman Fridays for the Bissell student. She will be joining us as a lunchroom playground assistant at Wilcox Primary School. I don't believe Andrea is here. We also have another lunchroom playground, excuse me, cook, Leah Pecome, who will be working at Wilcox. In prior to joining our staff, she provided in-home childcare for ten years. Now that her last student's in school full-time, she is joining the workforce at Wilcox. So let's welcome the two new members of the Wilcox staff.
If we could please have Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Winter come forward as we're going to greet our new members of the Samuel Bissell Elementary School staff. And to begin, we have Dana Castrigano. Dana graduated with a degree in art education and a minor in fine arts from Kent State University, and she taught in Phoenix, Arizona for five years and at Southeast Local Schools for the past three years. We're proud to say Dana is a member of our school community. She resides in the city of, village of Reminderville, and she will be teaching art at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, as well as one class at RB Chamberlain Middle School. So welcome, Dana.
Michael Fisher was not here tonight because he's working, started in the United States Supreme Court, is currently employed, was currently employed at South Walton Elementary School, and is now joining the Bissell staff as a janitor.
Our next new employee is Elena Miller. Mrs. Miller will be our new lunchroom playground assistant at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Before joining our staff, she served as the bookkeeper for Twins Day, so she's been really busy lately with Twins Days just happening. And she previously worked as a preschool teacher at First Class Preschool in Northfield. Welcome to Elena.
Jasmine Rowett, graduated from Ohio University with a degree in elementary ed. She taught in Chicago City, gained her masters in reading and learning disability. Jasmine taught in Fleetwood Municipal School District for eight years. She just completed one year as a long-term club at Bissell Elementary School last year and is happy to be joining as a full-time staff member. Congratulations to Jasmine.
Next, we have Dominic Schwed. Dominic graduated from Ohio Wesleyan University with a degree in physical education. He taught physical education and health and served as the athletic director at the Gross Schechter Day School in Pepper Pike for the past seven years. In addition to teaching physical education at Bissell, he will also serve in the capacity as middle school athletic director. Welcome to Dominic.
George D. Dodge, administrators, in the morning. Which is interesting because they're all deals wet. We'll make them go through this handshaking and then they'll come back and pre-schedule their year. Reginald Holland, new principal at Dodge, George D. Dodge Intermediate School, graduated from Miami University, taught math for six years in Euclid, served one year as an assistant principal in the Cleveland Municipal School District, served thirteen years as assistant principal and principal in the South People's Elementary School District. Welcome, Reg.
Mrs. Iwanda Huggins. Iwanda graduated from Baldwin Wallace with a degree in elementary education and taught fifth grade in the Bedford City School District at Columbus Intermediate School. She earned a master's in educational administration from John Carroll University before becoming an administrative intern at Columbus and Carrollwood Intermediate Schools in Bedford. Iwanda also served as a principal, and she is most recently the special education supervisor with the Bedford City Schools. Welcome to Iwanda.
Beth Mariola, not new to the district but from the chairman of Bissell. Graduated from Elders Day College. She taught language arts at RB Chamberlain for nine years while obtaining her master's degree in educational administration from Kent State University. First administrative assignment, congratulations, Beth.
Emily graduated from Bowling Green State University and taught art in the Marietta City Schools for one year. She then subbed in Stark County before landing a job at Riverview Local Schools where she most recently taught art for her first year. We welcome Emily, she'll be the new art teacher at George D. Dodge Intermediate School.
Mr. Jim Reese.
Kevin Bowers, graduated from the University of Dayton, earned a degree in special education, taught special education and served as a football coach in Willoughby East Lake for five years. He also taught at middle school level in Medina High Line, and one year at the Medina County Career Center. He is also a member of the high school football coaching staff. That's the uniform today.
Welcome to Kevin. Now, we already introduced Dana Castrigano, and as I mentioned, she'll also be teaching art at the middle school. The neat thing about Dana's assignment at the middle school is that students who take Art One will be able to take that for, actually, for high school credit. So we're delighted that Dana is also joining the staff at RBC. Next up is Gabrielle Coppin. Gabrielle graduated from Ohio University where she taught fifth grade at Southwest Licking in the Columbus area for the past seven years and served one year as their teacher technology coach. We are delighted that Gabrielle will be joining RB Chamberlain Middle School staff as a new English-language arts teacher. Welcome to Gabrielle. Oops, you missed one.
Excuse me?
David Mauer. I'm sorry, David. Graduated from the University of Akron, student taught in East Akron in grade four classroom, grew up in Dover, Ohio, and now joining us as a ton of math teacher at RB Chamberlain Middle School. Welcome, David.
If we could please have the high school administration come forward. Mrs. Turingo's here this evening, Mr. Warren, Mr. Popovich, Mr. Silverthorne, and our new athletic director, Mr. Fantone, who will introduce in just a few moments. Welcome, high school staff. Been a busy day at the high school. There we go.
Okay, we have the hype.
All right, we'd like to introduce Mike Bell. Mike graduated from Hiram College, and then he subbed for two years Mike graduated from Hiram College and then he subbed for two years in the Ashesbula County and then coached baseball, basketball, and football. He taught for four years in the Maple Heights City School District and coached football and baseball there. And then he taught and coached at Willoughby South High School for 18 years, three years as a defensive coordinator before becoming the head football coach. In 1999, Mike joined Lake Catholic as a defensive coordinator and he was still teaching at Willoughby South High School. And in 2001, he was the coach when Lake Catholic won the state title. In 2002, he was named the head football coach at Lake Catholic until 2013. And in 2014, Mike joined the staff, the coaching staff as the head football coach at East Lake North High School. We are absolutely delighted that Coach Bell has decided to make Twinsburg his next stop and I know the boys have been working really hard. I was telling Mike earlier today, we were at the high school, Mrs. McKinney and I first blocked this morning, and I could tell our football kids, they are walking in the hallways very proud and I really appreciate all that you're doing, Coach. So congratulations to Mike Bell.
Erin Benson, moved to Twinsburg in December of 2014 from Pennsylvania where she worked as the administrative assistant and office manager for ERA Sports. Previously, she worked for the Bedford YMCA as a program director and as an administrative assistant at Allagane Valley School in Pennsylvania. She is joining us as the administrative assistant to our athletic director. Welcome, Erin.
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Brian Fantone. Brian is a true Blue Tiger. He graduated from Twinsburg High School and attended Kent State University where he earned a teaching degree in integrated social studies. He landed his first teaching job at RB Chamberlain Middle School. In fact, Mrs. McKinley proudly explained that he was one of her very first hires when she became principal at RBC and has always been very proud of Brian and his teaching skills. He taught at RB Chamberlain for 10 years while serving as the student council advisor and the athletic director. And Brian now joins our staff as the athletic director coordinator of K-12 student activities. Congratulations to Brian.
Kelly Boymans, graduated from the University of Toledo. She taught American Sign Language at Moren School. She also taught 10th, 11th, and 12th grade English in the Oregon School District near the Toledo area. She more recently taught language arts at West Park Target School, formerly Open Academy, for six years. She will be joining us as American Sign Language and language arts teacher at the high school. Welcome, Kelly.
Our next staff member is not new to our school district but new to a position, and this is Lizette Simon. Many of you know Lizette as our part-time athletic department secretary, but this year she begins her secretarial career as a full-time secretary at Twinsburg High School. She's replacing Mrs. Bonnie Hensley, who retired after many, many years with our school district. And I understand Lizette is just doing so well in her new position, so welcome to Lizette.
Kimberly Smith will be hired as a business teacher at Twinsburg High School, graduated from Paulding Beach Atlantic University in West Palm Beach, Florida with a degree in business, marketing, and a minor in vocal music. She earned her masters from the University of Southern Mississippi and Hattiesburg, Mississippi in educational leadership. She taught fourth grade in Florida. She also taught welcoming in Mississippi and Texas. We will be, in the future, welcoming Kimberly Smith to the high school staff. Congratulations, Kimberly.
And last but not least, we'd like to introduce Brandy Thomas. Brandy graduated from Ursuline College with a degree in math and adolescent education. She has taught for seven years at Riverside in Painesville where she's also the head volleyball coach. Brandy is replacing Brian McNair, who, as you know, took a position in the city of Washington, DC. He's going to be teaching in inner-school math and we are delighted that Brandy had an interest in coming to Twinsburg High School. So we welcome Brandy. Okay. And then our next, our next two administrators who are not here this evening is because they're the administrators that oversee transportation. And on the very first day of the school year, transportation, even though it is now 6:35 in the evening, they're still very busy. So Mr. Brunton and Ms. Abbott are not here this evening and I think that, why don't we introduce them anyhow, Ms. McKinney?
Eric Brunton, transportation supervisor, comes to us as a senior high school member or he served as the assistant transportation supervisor for two years. Before that, he was a teacher in Cleveland and in Shaker City School District, who was also an assistant principal in Shaker and Whitley and a school board member in South People's Lumber. Welcome, Eric Brunton.
Our next administrator is not new to the district but new to her position as assistant transportation supervisor, and that's Tracy Abbott. Tracy started her transportation career right here in Twinsburg as a bus driver. And after driving for four years, she was promoted to dispatcher a couple of years back where she served for two years. And now she's been promoted to assistant transportation supervisor. She's doing a great job. Congratulations to Tracy and we assure all the best in her new role.
The next person is not new to the district but knowing her role. Bonnie Beadie started her Twinsburg career as a substitute secretary before landing a job as a high school secretary. After three years at Twinsburg High School, she applied for and gained the position of transportation secretary until this year when that position was eliminated and she assumed the position of dispatcher, which was vacated by Tracy Abbott. Congratulations, Bonnie, on your new position.
Our next new employee is a new bus driver and her name is Michelle Bennett. Michelle comes to us from the Bedford City School District where she drove a school bus for just one year. And then prior to that, she was the owner and trainer at Valley Fitness for four years. We welcome Michelle Bennett as our new bus driver.
Another new bus driver who started today was, excuse me, Simon Cowherd, comes to us from Hershey, PA by way of England. In Hershey, PA, he and his wife were house parents for the Milton Hershey School. And in England, he owned and operated an antique restoration company. We welcome Simon Cowherd.
Board of Education, it is my pleasure to introduce collectively the new staff for the 2015-16 school year. I am delighted that they picked Twinsburg as their next stop on their career. We hope them, we wish them a very long and happy and successful career here with our Tigers. And anything that we can do to support you, you know that it's just a phone call, an email, a text, or whatever, a message away. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. To the staff, I want to thank you for coming. I know some of you may have to, to leave, so if you want to get up and go before our committee reports, now would be the time to do that. But I do want to say thank you to everyone for coming tonight. Before we move forward in the agenda, Mr. Aho, I would like to make note that Ms. Kane Criswell did arrive. She broke through the log jam that was, or the parking lot that was called I-77, right?
And downtown.
And downtown. So thank you, Kate, for your diligence in trying to get through the traffic to get here this evening. Next on the agenda then are committee reports, and I would like to pause now for my colleagues if anyone has anything under committee reports this evening. Anything on this side? We do have time for miscellaneous, for anything that anybody has at the end of the meeting. At this time then, we will move forward in the agenda to remonstrance. I do not have any blue cards before me, but would ask my administrative team, do you have anything this evening from the audience? Okay. Next on the agenda then is the treasurer's report and recommendations under Agenda Item H. Before we take action, Mr. Aho, any, any comments this evening from the treasurer's office?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Without objection from my colleague, I will read these three agenda items together and consent agenda. Item H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, which are belonging to the regular meeting of August 5, 2015, which was sent to the board under separate cover. Item H2, that the Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of June 2015, the bank reconciliation, general fund financial summary report, and the financial report by fund, which was also sent to the board under separate cover. And item H3, that the Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of June 2015, the total including payroll is $3,375,765.50. Is there a motion for these three agenda items, please? Moved by Mr. Felber, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion on these three items? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. Those three items pass 5-0. Next on the agenda are our action items under personnel. And without objection from my colleagues, I will read all three of these together, consent agenda. Item I1, that the Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2, that the Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I2, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And item I3, that the Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I3, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for these three agenda items, please?
Hold on.
Moved by Ms. Davis, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Any discussion on the matters of personnel? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those three items pass 5-0. Moving to the action items under Agenda Item J, we have four items under new business that I will read together, consent agenda. Item J1, that the Board of Education accepts a donation valued at $675 from Buckeye Power Sales of Twinsburg, Ohio for backpacks and school supplies for students at the Wilcox Primary School, as per the attached exhibit J1. J2, that the Board of Education accepts a donation of school supplies valued at $1,000 from Technoform Glass Insulation in Twinsburg, Ohio. The school supplies will be distributed to students in need at all five of our school buildings. Item J3, that the Board of Education adopts and purchases Apex Learning online curriculum. The adoption was approved at the curriculum and technology meeting held on June 22, 2015 and was sent to the board under separate cover. This item is a general fund expense. And item J4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a settlement agreement, release, and waiver for a student identified with special needs who will attend the Kids Link Nero Behavioral Center for the 2015-2016 school year, per the conditions outlined in the settlement agreement, which was sent to the board under separate cover. And this item is also a general fund expense. Is there a motion for these four agenda items, please? Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Any discussion on these items? Mrs. Powers, if you wouldn't mind, just a little, just, I know we talked about Apex before, but for the sake of the meeting here, the Apex online learning curriculum.
Sure. Back in June, the Curriculum and Technology Committee had an opportunity to preview Apex. It's our new online curriculum. You know, we were looking to add some rigor to the curriculum that we use at TAP, our Twinsburg alternative program. And through that research, we recognized that in some select cases, we may have some students at the high school, maybe the middle school, who might benefit from, from this particular online curriculum. But this purchase is meant primarily to be used at TAP. It will complement the teachers that are onsite every day, working with our kids. But these are kids that learn best in a non-traditional sense, an online curriculum. So that's what that resolution is, is to support that recommendation.
Thank you for that.
Welcome.
Any other discussion points this evening on these agenda items?
So just to think our donors, I mean, school supplies really add up in the beginning of school year and this is just generous donation for, to help out some of our students in the schools, so.
Agreed.
Always appreciated.
Just gonna say the exact same thing.
Donations are always welcome and thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those four items pass 5-0. The final agenda item this evening is under action items for new business, J5. Whereas there is an opening in the position of teacher, and whereas the superintendent has recommended that Maria Radska be employed in the position, now therefore it be it resolved that Mrs. Radska be re-employed in the position of teacher, beginning on August 1, 2015 and continuing through July 31, 2016. Be it further resolved that it is hereby found to determine that all formal action of this board concerning and/or relating to the adoption of this resolution was taken in an open meeting of this board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Is there a motion for this agenda item? Moved by Mr. Felber, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Again, this is related to the previous topic in the agenda, the public hearing, and we had made notice of that in the paper and had made notice of the public hearing a few board meetings ago. And it is simply a matter of procedure that we go through these steps when we are hiring or employing, if you will, a retired teacher. And in this case, that being Maria Radska. Is there any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. Bringing us to miscellaneous on the agenda, I would ask first of the administrative team, do you have anything for us under miscellaneous tonight?
Not this evening, thank you.
Or Mr. Aho?
No.
My colleagues tonight, anything under miscellaneous? Just, I guess, recognition again of Friday night, the meet the Tigers night, 7 o'clock at the stadium. If you're available, come on out and I think there's going to be a lot of yelling and shouting and cheering and spirit that evening, so. We do have need for an executive session. I will make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 6:53 p.m. to review negotiations with public employees per Board of Education Policy 0160, paragraph E, and also to discuss employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees per Board of Education Policy 0166A. I've made that motion, is there a second? Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. And again, just a note, at the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene back to this location, these desks, if you will. We will then take a short recess to drive across the street and the board will reconvene this public, regular meeting at the high school in the LPod, in the large group instruction room, where we will participate in a work session with our administrative team to discuss the goals for the 2015-16 school year. This is a common occurrence that we do. Usually, we have that work session as a separate meeting, but we weren't able to get all of our calendars aligned, so we combined it with the meeting tonight. But we like to have the work sessions at the high school where we can get all of our administrative team around a table. We have access to whiteboards and projectors if we need that. So the only action that I want to make mention of is that there will not be action related to the executive session, but there will be a consideration of the district goals that will be put before the board for approval at the end of that work session at the high school tonight. Any other discussion points for the motion to move to executive session? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Thank you. The board will now move to executive session.